You can't hear her.
Yeah, we just realized that. We're working on it.
I'll start from the top. Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And during our moment of silence, I would like for us to offer a moment for our Officer Brian Rowland, who passed away this week, this weekend, Howard Hanna, who passed away, Dr. Freddie Foo, who passed away, and the President of CMU's son, Thomas Johannahan. Please keep them all in your thoughts. Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next order of business is proclamations. We have one for Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess for the Diaper Bank. Councilman Lavelle, could you please present for Councilman Burgess? Although he's joining us remotely, he'd like to have it read and presented in person.
Reverend Battle? Reverend Battle and his wife there?
Yes. Reverend Battle's here. His wife is not with us today.
Okay.
I will read the proclamation on behalf of Reverend Burgess, and then I'll turn it over for Burgess to give remarks, and then we'll have you present as well. Whereas the nonprofit Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank, established in 2012 by Reverend Philip and Kathy Battle, was based in Pittsburgh's East End, at present is the only local organization that has addressed this need as its sole purpose and the only diaper bank in the state west of Harrisburg. Whereas for eight years, the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank, in following its mission to help ensure that babies in need are clean, healthy, and dry, has distributed more than 1 million diapers to low-income or poverty-level families in Western Pennsylvania through a network of 24 social service agency partners. Whereas the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank now also provides period supplies to women in need through those agencies as part of the National Alliance for Period Supplies, supporting women's health and enabling them to go to work and school to break the cycle of poverty. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby commend the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank for their vision of communities where all families have an equal opportunity to thrive, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of September 27th through October 3rd, 2021, to be National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation is approved. Thank you, Councilman Lavelle and Burgess.
So, um, the President.
We're getting a photo, and then we're gonna... Okay, we're gonna hear from Councilman Burgess first, and then from the guest. Is that okay? Councilman Burgess?
So I want to certainly support and congratulate my friend and colleague Reverend Battle on just he and his wife's initiative to do this important work. I think that the needs of women and children should always be at the forefront of our efforts as a government, especially African-American women and children disproportionately are affected by poverty and other circumstances. So I want to this congratulate them and talk about how emphasize how important their work is, and to let Reverend Battle know that I am appreciative of his wife and his great work, of his friendship and his support over these long stretches of years, and the council recognizes his work deeply, deeply. It's... The warehouse is in my district, down the street from my house, actually, and so we are very, very, very much supportive of all the work that they do.
Thank you, Reverend.
I'd like to thank the City Council, our Councilman and Reverend Burgess, and Councilman Lavelle, and all of you who have continued to support us as we raise awareness to the diaper disparity in our region. I'm happy to let you know that we also were reaching out to other counties as well. We have a hub, a small warehouse in Westmoreland County now. We're reaching out as far as Johnstown in Erie. So I think that it's... We're... Our footprint is getting bigger, and as our footprint gets bigger, so does our need. And this is Diaper Awareness Week, and it's all over the nation, and we're glad that you have consistently supported us in everything we do. We look forward to many diaper drives from each of you. And we also need volunteers. We also have expanded our services even more into incontinent supplies for our senior citizens, and also period supplies for young girls and young women. All these things are, you know, it's a basic essential, and none of them are covered on EBT or any other type of, excuse me, subsidy. We're proud of the fact that we are the only diaper bank, or the only agency, or nonprofit that focuses specifically on the welfare of babies and women. But we've recently joined forces with the National Center for Urban Solutions, and we're going to also support them in our African-American male wellness. And we're gonna have a walk coming in next October that we're planning on, and we'll probably be coming to you guys for proclamation for that. And as we expand our services, and as we join with other supportive services, collaborate, it's indeed a pleasure to always be supported by this council. I appreciate you very much. God bless.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much. Councilman, did you want to say anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. And we have one proclamation from Councilman O'Connor to be read and... Or to be presented, correct? Yeah, one to be presented and the others to be read into the record.
All read.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so it's 1:07.
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connor presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate the recipients for receiving the legendary Lifetime Achievement Award from the Nobby Christian Ministry.
We have a motion to approve in a second?
A move.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation is approved. Councilman, did you want to say anything? Okay, and one for myself to be read into the record.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1952. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby remember and honor the life of Dr. J.K. Couples, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declare Wednesday, September 29, 2021, to be Dr. J.K. Couples Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Have a motion to approve in a second?
Move.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation is approved. And can we now have the will of council presented by Councilwoman Deb Gross? And Councilwoman, do you want it read in its entirety?
No, that's okay. You can just maybe read the first two, whereas is, and skip down to the be it resolved.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents, whereas many childcare programs have operated their business with razor-thin margins, which are now significant losses due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas teachers and staff at childcare programs make an average of less than $11 per hour, wages that are not commensurate to the value of the services they provide. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls on the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the administration of Governor Tom Wolf to reinstate the education and retention award with improvements to support equity, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls on the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the administration of Governor Tom Wolf to release details about the disbursement of the remaining $400-plus million American Rescue Plan discretionary childcare funding, and quickly release these funds to support childcare providers and families who have been adversely affected by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, is there a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, council's proof... Councilwoman, did you want something to add?
Yes, Councilwoman Strasburger's staff also participated and was willing to thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, for supporting and co-sponsoring. And I wanted to thank a few other people in the childcare industry here in Pittsburgh. This will of council really originated by one of our childcare providers in Lawrenceville at the Stephen Foster Center, Tracy O'Connell from Catholic Youth Services, who runs a very large center, who's a very capable and active leader in childcare. I always say if we could just give Tracy kind of three more buildings, she could run them all. She has a very long waiting list to get into her center. And she explained to us how these state awards were cut back last year, and it's really provided inequity, so that the larger, more resource centers are getting this state subsidy, but the smaller centers are not able to qualify any longer. So we're calling on the state to restore that funding so that it's more equitable. It was not the intended effect, of course, but we're really able to see in Pittsburgh that it has been received inequitably. And then I'm also happy to announce that the state actually has released, as of yesterday, like yesterday, and there hasn't even been an announcement locally yet. I don't think there's gonna be more. I'm trying together, just contacted us this morning, that the state is releasing those federal relief funds. You know, there's always more needed, probably. There's six... It sounds like a lot statewide. It's six, over 600 million, we believe. But the first round was a similar size last year, and really only worked out to about $500 per center statewide. And so we know that we need to continue to keep advocating for funding for childcare centers, and trying together tells us we've lost some 11 centers in the city already. And especially, those numbers come from two people at trying together, of course, Karissa Mello, who we all know at City Council very well, as the Executive Director, and Emily Neff, who works closely with my staff, so we appreciate their work and their advocacy, because it benefits us all, citywide.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone, any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I really want to thank Councilwoman Gross for her work on this, and, you know, as a reminder to anyone who might be watching, it was the Women's Caucus that preceded my time on council that really got the money allocated, that was just recently allocated locally to several different childcare centers as well, and it's such a drop in the bucket. And really, yes, we need the federal funds flowing through the state to be allocated appropriately, and that's great news that just yesterday that was announced, and, you know, and we need more, because our economy's not gonna function, as we saw very clearly, without childcare. It's an economic imperative, too, and it's an equity question, and it's, you know, I was reminded by someone that we have this reconciliation bill that's being partnered with our infrastructure bill at the federal level, and it's a very partisan issue, unfortunately, but it was reminded to me, someone reminded me that actually voting for things like social infrastructure, like childcare, has a downward effect on our inflation, because it gets women back into the workforce. So for any fiscal conservatives out there, you know, it actually is an improvement to our economy in more ways than one, and, you know, has, doesn't add to the deficit in the same way that some people think it does. So I hope that anyone watching picks up the phone and calls their U.S. Senator, and urges them, and strongly urges them to vote for the reconciliation package in addition to the infrastructure bill, because they're, in my mind, equally important. So really, really appreciative for the will of council today for Councilwoman Gross and for trying together, and, you know, there's so much more to do. I look forward to working with everyone on council, and especially Councilwoman Gross on these issues.
Any other members? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next order of business, and thank you. I just want to thank both the councilwomen for their continued work in this area. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please, and the first speaker I have registered is Ikona Helmackina. Ikona Helmackina. She on? She is on? Okay. Ikona Helmackina. If you're on, you need to unmute your mic. Ikona Helmackina, one more time. We will come back to Ikona Helmackina. Our next speaker, registered speaker, is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen, is she on? She's on, too.
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Naomi Mullen, Bon Air. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Yesterday, in my public speech to the school board, I gave them a notice of liability. Just as a doctor pledges to first do no harm, a public official must do no harm or be held liable. When noncompliance with policy and rights are violated, there is recourse against trespassers. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. Negligent attorneys cannot be hidden behind. Officials who suppress rights and privileges shall be held accountable. Fraud that is constructed must be corrected or punished. It can only be expected and assumed that City Council is aware of the crime in progress against property owners in Bon Air. It is the desire of we, the people, that City Council stand in solidarity with Bon Air against tyranny. We actually want to keep our police officers that live in the neighborhood. They have chosen to stay and not flee the city. Do not allow the lie of community support to continue to harm us. My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air School Building. Do your part for the environment, reduce urban heat, reduce watershed to Route 51, increase green space to benefit all ages and stages, protect the children at the playground across the street, let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have poor access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Have a good day. And our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Uh, Dr. Ronald and Miller, Bells Hoover and Oakland, Global Intelligence Society candidate for President of Pittsburgh Mayor, 2021, globalintelligence.society.org. Under the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Sections 212 to 213, a concern of Pittsburgh City Council is the Office of Solicitor, head of the Department of Law. The current solicitor hired and who may be summarily fired by Mr. Pedudo is Evelyn Hilton, 412-255-2015. Who does the unelected City of Pittsburgh Solicitor represent? Apparently, the Pittsburgh mayor and councilors, and quote, "any unit of government." Yes. Citizens like you and me, apparently, no. Who set this up? Apparently, if the mayor or any of your councilors does something you think is illegal in relation to you, the city solicitor will represent the mayor or counselor, not for you, but against you. Apparently, if you ask Ms. Hilton to represent you, if you think that Mr. Pedudo engaged another citizen to undermine your mayoral campaign via defamatory, profane council public comment, or that councilors Kraus, Burgess, and Gross enabled interference with your right to speech during council public comment, Ms. Hilton, Solicitor of the people of the City of Pittsburgh, will defend them against one of the people, you. So if you ask the Solicitor to investigate these possibilities, providing public record evidence, she will investigate in order to prepare a defense for them against you, and she will not tell you the results of the investigation. She is very likely not going to answer your telephone calls, your texts, your emails. Isn't this familiar, citizens, as to what our councilors do and what the mayor does? Does Mr. Pedudo, as mayor, treat Ms. Hilton as Solicitor like Mr. Trump, as president, treated Mr. William Barr as U.S. Attorney General, to use for his own legal purposes? I think so. Does the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh have the right to believe that he or she is ultimately the law? If mayor, I will sign a legally binding document prohibiting the mayor from using the Solicitor as legal counsel. Will Ganey and Moreno and any other candidate for mayor join me in this?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Our next speaker is Charmaine Poma.
Charmaine Poma. Greetings, greetings. Thanks for the light in the ca... The light in me honors the light in you. I want to give a special shout out to Teresa Kell Smith for always being open to discuss things, and the rest of the City Council who has met with us. I want to say today that it is very important to understand that it is our right to have free and prior informed consent. And I, Charmaine Poma, I'm a Cho'kam'awhia, I have the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American people. I've been doing a lot of work in, as it relates to agriculture and permaculture in the City of Pittsburgh. There is a problem that we are not being addressed in a formal manner to ask, what is our desire? What is our needs? How do we see the landscaping of our lands all throughout the Delaware Territory, which you know is Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania? It is very, very important for City Council to understand what their role and responsibility is in their oath of office to the Constitution. And the Home Rule Charter clearly states that the City of Pittsburgh has all Home Rule powers and may perform any function and exercise any power not denied by the Constitution. The laws of Pennsylvania are very, very clear, and the Constitution is very clear. And we are, and excluding Indians, not tax, and that's a very special, unique people that we are. Very distinct. We are the Aborigines of the Americas. And according to House/Congress Resolution, Congress has also acknowledged that there must be a need to exercise the utmost good faith in upholding all of our treaties, the Delaware Treaty, Lancaster Treaty, there are many others, and the various people that we have, and we understand our own treaties to be. So we understand what we want and what we need and what we desire, see the landscape of our lands, be corrected, be fixed, soils to be reclaimed, and the air to be cleaned, and the waters to be clean. If there is no discussion with our people, the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American people, as it relates to the URA and any future development that they may be doing, or any development, any contractors, independent contractors, or those who are city contractors do, there must be open dialogue with our nation, the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American people. We will hold everyone accountable to their oath of office, as the Constitution is very clear, and so are all of our treaties, and are you.
Thank you. Have a good day. And our next speaker is Yvonne Brown. Morning, Ms. Brown.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. It's in the Hill District. I am here to explain that up in K. Lee Weir Irving's tires, you remember, I know you remember K. Lee Weir Irving, our state representative, who fought to build that, the building for the senior citizens, for the senior citizens to live. I have here a petition. Now, I did not write this as a resident, but you need to understand what we're going through. I am writing this petition on behalf of the residents in K. Lee Weir Irving's tires, 715 Mercer Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15219. We have been notified that as of August the 31st, 2021, we will no longer have security on site in our building, and they have been replaced by cameras. Here are just some of the reasons to show, that shows that management has little regard for the safety of the residents. Reason one, this building is supposed to house seniors, persons with disabilities, and some with mental issues. And most of us seniors, we have worked hard, raised our families, and paid our taxes. We've made it through all the ups and downs that life has thrown at our, thrown our way. We have paid our dues, and now in the last stages of our lives, we just want to enjoy the life that we have left and feel safe in our home. Number two, can a camera give chest compressions to a person having some sort of medical attack? Can a camera put a stop to someone that's being attacked in the hallway? Can a camera stop someone from trying to break into someone's apartment? Can a camera help someone having mental episodes that requires someone to talk and comfort that person? There are so many issues that may occur that could be helped by having security present while waiting for an ambulance, police, or firemen to arrive. By having the time, by the time the camera shows the situation to wherever it is sent the situation to, the victim or person in distress may die. In security, if security is on staff, at least they could help until medical help arrives or police, depending on the situation. Having a security person on staff helps to deter people, persons with bad intentions, and helps in medical situations that may arise, and gives us residents a sense of feeling safe. It is true that we're not in a position to pay the high-scale rent that some of these exclusive buildings offer. It says access to swimming pools, tennis courts, and golf courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Have a good day. Welcome back. And I'm gonna go back to our registered speaker, Ikona Helmackina. Ikona Helmackina.
Greetings, greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, now, good morning.
Grand rising to you all. Grand rising and good day. My title's Ikona Helmackina. Okay. I am first and mother, so I have to address the needs of my child for a second here. I am first and mother, so I have to address the needs of my child for a second here. It'll be kind of. Thank you for your patience. I am asking city council to be more transparent about the affairs and the decision-making, as you are the decision-making body over the corporate government, over a population of over 300,000 people. And, to me, it is just appalling that greater than 90% of your decisions are made without the input of the very people your decisions will affect. I urge members of city council to be more transparent in your decision-making process. Your voices and decisions are that of a minority, since city council members are made up of merely nine people, and a population, I remind you, of over 300,000. A few weeks ago, you had a series of public meetings concerning the ARP, American Rescue Plan. Lots of feedback from your citizens/residents was given. I just wonder how much of that feedback was considered, implemented, or followed up upon? An informed group or committee could have been formed to further discuss the concerns of your constituents and those who cared enough to show up and to be active participants and engage in the decision-making process. Yes, I am. That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. In closing, I will continue to advocate for my people, who are the most marginalized population of people in America, which is our home. We are the Onkway Homeway. We are the Rottweiler Nissimi. We are the Mississippi, Choctaw Creek, Seminole, Seneca, Delaware, Mohawk, Erie, to name a few. And we are seeking environmental justice to protect our land, our air, our water, because we know if we take care of it, it will continue to take care of us. I appreciate your time, and I yield the rest of mine. Peace, light, and love.
Thank you, and have a good day. See, there are no further registered speakers online. Are there any speakers in the audience? Any that would like to come speak before council? Please come to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. George Scott, downtown Pittsburgh. Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, council members, esteemed colleagues, guests, and speakers. My name is George Scott, and I am a Business Services Coordinator for National Center for Urban Solutions, housed at 304 Wood Street in the Wood Street Commons. National Center for Urban Solutions is in a partnership with Neon Allegheny County Child Support to help non-custodial parents reunify with their children via employment. We have been here since January of 2021. To date, in this office, along with Lackawanna, Dolphin, Delaware, and Philadelphia, we have facilitated about 15,000 non-custodial parents in securing employment. This is a very serious situation, whereas the taxpayers have to pay for child support for those who cannot work, who will not work, or who are in arrears. We have partnered with them for job skills, resume writing skills, interview skills, and job retention. We don't just want them to be placed in employment, but we want them to be retained, because the longer they are retained, the more people will help, will help those relationships between the non-custodial parents and their children. We are National Center for Urban Solutions in a partnership with Neon Allegheny Child Support. We ask for your support, whether it be financial or otherwise. We are also going to conduct a walk. We focus on education, workforce engagement, and health and wellness in the African-American male. Again, we ask for your support. Our first walk was 2004 in Columbus. We're going to do our next walk here October of next year. We also have a job fair, a career fair, at the VFW James P. Chrysler Memorial Post 6675, where I am a junior vice commander. There will be a career fair there from 10 to, from 10 o'clock until 2 o'clock, October 27, 2021. Right now, we have about 10 employer partners. We will not charge them table space, because I'm an officer of the VFW, and I think that it's very important for them to come there for the sole purpose of interviewing and extending job offers to non-custodial parents. Thank you very much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder to the members, when you just stand up, when you're presenting the papers, just don't touch them. Madam Clerk will take them off the table. Thank you. Just a reminder.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1942, Ordinance Amending and Updating the City Code at a number of locations to repeal boards, commissions, committees, councils, special meetings, and task forces that functionally no longer exist, and to remove references to boards, commissions, councils, special meetings, and task forces that have previously been repealed.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1920, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 567, Providing for a Contract and Agreements for the Design and Replacement of the Charles Anderson Bridge, and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $965,794.03 to Add Further Budget and Authority for a Letter of Amendment to the Original Reimbursement Agreement Not to Exceed a Total of $967,044.03. This resolution increases, increases the authorized not-to-exceed amount to $1,175,324.66, and names Michael Baker as the professional services provider for this work. Bill Number 1921, Resolution Providing for a Further Amendment Reimbursement Agreement with the Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $3,690,000, An Increase of $2,505,000 to Increase the Project's Budget for Preliminary Engineering and to Add Budgets for Final Design and Right-Away Phases. The Previous Amendment to Agreement 51544 was Authorized by Resolution 567. Bill Number 1922, Resolution Granting unto Luxury Property Group East Liberty LLC, Their successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a Canopy at 6012 Center Avenue in the 7th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 1923, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the South 21st Street Complete Green Street Project, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $3 million, with a Local Match of $473,618 to be Contributed by the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $3,473,618. Bill Number 1924, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Submit an Application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program to Provide Funding for Second Avenue Streetscape Project. The Grant Proposal Asks Includes an Ask of $2,105,118 with No Local Match Required. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $2,105,118. Bill Number 1925, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Submit an Application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program for the Center Avenue Streetscape Project. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $2,987,125.37 with, with no local match required. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $2,987,125.37. Bill Number 1926, Resolution Granting unto Catellus Tasso G. Living Trust, Their successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a New Steel Awning, Two Tree Pits Along Center Avenue, and Four Tree Pits Along Morewood Avenue at 4951 Center Avenue in the 8th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1927, Resolution Granting unto HTA Federal North Mob LLC, Their successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense Three New Canopy Covered Awning on an Existing Building at 1219 Federal Street, 1st Ward, 22nd Council District. Bill Number 1928, Resolution Amending Resolution 259, Entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for Renovation of the South Side Park, to Add Language to Allow the City to Accept the Grant Award and Spend the Funds.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair.
Madam President. If I may, ask to waive the rules of council on Bill Number 1928, so it can appear on tomorrow's agenda.
Yes, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, second, very brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I had asked Councilman Coghill if he would be so kind as to offer a waiver of the rules. It's simply to make application for grant funding for South Side Park.
Okay. So, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it will appear, the bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1929, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 635 Smithfield Street Renovations Project, which will involve the development of a 47 multi-unit apartment complex with the first floor devoted to restaurants and office space. The site address is 635 Smithfield Street in the 6th Ward. Bill Number 1930, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Proposed Recreation and Wellness Center and the Hillside Housing Project Located on the University of Pittsburgh's Campus Along O'Hara Street and University Drive A.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Do new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And Councilman LaBelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman LaBelle presents Bill Number 1931, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of George W. Powell in the Amount of $3,403.76 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Park Vehicle from a City Environmental Services Vehicle Backing into it on December 17th of 2020. Bill Number 1941, Ordinance Amending the City Code at Title II Fiscal Article I Administration in Order to Make Technical Corrections in Chapter 218 and 219 Related to Past Event That No Longer Exists.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1932, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 534, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an amended Grant Agreement with the United States Department of Justice to Receive Monies from the 2018 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and Further Authorizing Legitimate Expenditures by the Bureau of Police for Purchases Authorized by the amended Grant Agreement and for the Execution of Agreement or Contracts for any equipment or services required in connection with the execution of said grant. Said amended agreements shall not exceed $117,219.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson. Anyway, did I get Councilwoman Strasburger? I apologize.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1937, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into Startup Participation Agreements with Selected Entities as Part of the Seven Cohort of PGH Lab, and Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into Program Participation Agreements with Local Municipal Entities to Allow Such Entities to Test Products and Services as Part Through PGH Lab.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1933, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to Provide Administration and Operating Expenses, Housing and Housing-Related Supportive Services to Persons with HIV/AIDS and Their Families at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $1,202,295. Bill Number 1934, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDBG Program and the 2018-Through 2023 Capital Improvement Program so as to Reduce Community-Based Organizations by $15,000, Increase Neighborhood Economic Development by $15,000, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement. Bill Number 1935, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 CDBG Program, and Approving the 2016-Through 2021 Capital Improvement Program so as to Reduce Community-Based Organizations by $7,609.82, Increase Neighborhood Economic Development by $7,609.82, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement. Bill Number 1936, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name of Laura Court in the 6th Ward of the City as Part of Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in February of 2021. The Name Listed in this Ordinance shall be Made Official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. While you're reading all that, you gave me a chance to find out what motions we need. Thank you, Councilman Kraus and Kirk, Kim Clerk, for your help. And the next is my committee, Chair of Hearings. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one resolution, one petition, and two ordinances.
Council President Kel Smith presents Bill Number 1938, Resolution Submitting the Names Billy Hillman, Kiki Brown, G.L. Johnson, Raymond Robinson, Karen McClellan, and Mary Jo Greco for Consideration by the Mayor to Fill the Council Seat Number One Vacancy, Mayoral Seat Number Five Vacancy, and the Pending Term Expirations for City Council Seats Number Two and Number Four on the Citizen Police Review Board.
Motion to read, receive, file, please.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion's approved. Thank you, Councilman. And the petition?
Bill Number 1939, Petition for the Residents of the City Requesting a Public Hearing Before City Council Relative to File 2021-1906 in Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zone in Article IV, Chapter 908, Public RAM District, by True Addition of a New Subsection, Oakland Sub-District EOPRE, Oakland Crossing. The Petition is Valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Motion to read, receive, file. Correct?
This petition will be held for a public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for that one. And we'll get that scheduled after we talk about next. And we'll get that scheduled after we talk about it next week. And the next is two ordinances.
Bill 1940, Ordinance Amending the Fee Sections of the City Code at a Multiple Location to Reflect Current Practices and to Bring Those Sections into Compliance with Chapter 170 Fees. Bill Number 1943, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code at Title I Administrative Article 11 Human Resources, Chapter 192 Pensions by Adding Subsection 192023 so as to Add Language to Allow for Elimination of the Social Security Offset for Municipal Employees.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I also please be added as a sponsor to 1943?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your help with that, too. And that moves us on to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, and we'll begin with Councilman LaValle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman LaValle presents Bill Number 1917, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for September 22nd of 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1847, Resolution Authorizing the City Clerk to Enter into an Agreement and/or Contracts with an Attorney, Attorneys, or Law Firms approved by Council for various legal services as they arise on behalf of Pittsburgh City Council in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000. Bill Number 1903, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 to the City Code the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Accept a Donation from the Jewish Community Center of Greater Pittsburgh in the Amount of $12,500 for Traffic Calming on Darlington Road, and Further Amending Resolution Number 647, Effective December 23rd, 2020 as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget", the 2021 CDBG Program, and the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Complete Streets by $12,500.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final passage, final action. All in favor of the passage of vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaValle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, zeros.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1918, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for September 22nd with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1834, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 608, authorize the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into an amended Professional Services Agreement with the Center that cares for the Purpose of Continued Implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Valence Intervention Street Outreach Program at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $9,010,417. Bill Number 1877, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code Title VI Article 8, Chapter 633 by Adding a New Section 63325 Prohibiting the Declawing of Cats.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills, Councilman Wilson? Do you have an amendment?
Madam President, I have amendment to 1877. Motion to amend this amendment is just in the recital section to just clarify some of the language.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions? It's amended. The bill's amended. And now the vote for all the bills. The bill, um... All in favor of the passage of vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaValle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, zeros.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed, are finally passed. And that moves us on to our final committee of the day is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1919, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for September 22nd of 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1368, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at the Corner of Harian Avenue and Ruthven Street, including those Parcels Identified on the Attached Exhibit. Bill Number 1848, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Garden Theater Block Project in the 22nd Ward. Bill Number 1849, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 346 John Clara Street. Bill Number 1850, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Performance of Certain Work in Connection with the 2021-2022 CDBG Program and Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $7,442,500, Council District All. Bill Number 1851, Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement with the URA Designating the URA as the City's Agent for Administration of the 2021-2022 Home Investment Partnership Program, Council Districts All. Bill Number 1853, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Property in the 13th Ward of the City, Council District Number Nine, Nader Way, Southwest Corner of Nader Way and Formosa Way. Bill Number 1854, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between the URA and Jackie Moore for the Sale in the Third Ward, Council District Number Six, Cliff Street Side Yard Sale. Bill Number 1855, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between the URA and Chris Stambler for the Sale in the 10th Ward, Council District Number Nine, Kincaid Street Side Yard Sale. Bill Number 1856, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 12th Ward, Council District Number Nine, Meadow Street, Southwest Side of Meadow Street between Ashley and Paulson Avenue. Bill Number 1857, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Property in the 15th Ward, Council District Number Five, Lidle Street, East Side of Lidle Street, South of West Elizabeth Street. Bill Number 1858, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 12th Ward, Council District Number Nine, Meadow Street, Southeast Side of Meadow Street, North of Paulson Avenue. Bill Number 1859, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 5th Ward, Council District Number Five, 826 and 828 Shawnee Street. Bill Number 1860, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 18th Ward of the City, Council District Number Three, 844 Geering Avenue and 814 Delmont Avenue. Bill Number 1861, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between the URA and Rose Street Ventures or Related Entities for the Sale, Council District Number Six, 2117, 1921, 2325, and 2127 Rose Street. Bill Number 1862, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Property in the 12th Ward, Council District Number Nine, Lincoln Avenue, North Side of Lincoln Avenue, East of Winslow Street. Bill Number 1863, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 4th Ward, Council District Number Six, 2 Seneca Street and 3 Seneca Street. Bill Number 1864, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Publicly-owned Properties in the 12th Ward, Council District Number Nine, 979, 981, 983, 85, and 987 Washington Boulevard.
Thank you. Wow, that's a lot. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaValle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, zeros.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. And we have some motions and resolutions, and I have some meeting announcements, and then we'll get to members. This afternoon at 3:00 PM, council will hold an executive session relative to Bill 1830. Do we know what that bill is for? In regards to? I want the public to know. I can see myself.
It's going to be Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of De Apollonia Engineering.
Okay, I just want the public to know, we're meeting about an executive session. Council will hold their standing committee's meeting tomorrow. Our standing committee's meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, September 29th at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration for this meeting closes at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. To register, fill out at the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138. Also tomorrow afternoon, with sessions at 1:30 and 2:15, council will hold a briefing with the Office of Equity to discuss the long-term strategy for welcoming Pittsburgh. And Thursday morning, September 30th, with sessions at 10:00, 10:30, and 11:00, council will hold a briefing with the Law Department to discuss the recommendations and updates to the Sunshine Act. Is there anything from members? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, Madam President, if I could, if it's not too late, I'd like to be added as a sponsor to Bill Number 1943 with the Social Security offset.
Oh, that's great. Oh, noted.
And I did have one other question.
Yes.
As far as Bill 1847, hiring our own council, I see the $30,000 figure in there. Is that annually, I guess? Is that, is it just so, so we get $30,000?
Just for the completion of 2021.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll just renew it next year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any others, anything else from members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
I'm doing this online. Is it possible, like at 11:30? Is it, Madam Clerk, if you're there, too, and I don't know your schedules, is it possible for Councilwoman Gross, myself, Councilman Kraus, and Councilwoman LaValle, they have a brief, and the clerk, they have a brief phone call or Zoom call at 11:30? Is that possible for the members, those members?
And that's in regards to the solicitor.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that I tell the public that this, I was going to send an email. But I will say that I have a point, I'm pointing and asking, and you all agreed to have Councilman Kraus, Councilman Burgess, Councilman LaValle, and Councilwoman Gross all on the committee for a city council solicitor. And I think we should have already meet today if it's possible for everyone. But I think that that's something that, well, you can all do in an email. Is that all right?
I have a 12 in Oakland.
Okay.
12 o'clock, so I'd be leaving by about 11:40-ish.
You'll be fine with it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'm also booked from like 12 till 4 or 5, but I can make it a short window between 11:30 and 12:00.
So, Madam Clerk, can you set that up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, everyone, for agreeing to serve, too. Anything else from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Move.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good day, everyone. Be safe. Thank you.